At 5:10, I am calling to order this special meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Ojai at, as I said, 5:10 PM on Wednesday, September 20th, or September 30th. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quelisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nola.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Swift.
Here.
All in attendance, thank you.
So we're all present, and do we have a shot of the flag so we could do a pledge Excellent, excellent. Commissioner Nolan, would you like to lead us, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is the time on the agenda for public communications. That is, for people to talk about city business that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak under public communications? Sherry or Lucas?
Nothing.
We receive nothing.
All right, we'll move on to our discussion item then, and that is Planning Commission's appeal of the Community Development Manager's decision regarding the Director's exemption from Planning Commission review DE 20-009 for the use of a refrigerator in the Ojai Valley Pharmacy, Ojai Village Pharmacy, excuse me, for the sale of beer and wine, which is a change in use to a portion of the existing pharmacy pursuant to Ojai Municipal Code Section 10-2.2003 subsection A4. Lucas, would you like to lead us into this discussion, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to go into the background and then, and then talk a little bit about the project, the matter before us tonight, and I believe Matt, the city attorney, Summers, will have some information as well. And then we also have the applicants here tonight, Mr. LaBrosse and Ms. Menuchian here tonight as well. And then there's also, we got some public comment that came in and was provided to the commission as well, and I'll mention both of those at the end of this presentation. So let's just go on a little bit of the background in terms of how this all started. This was originally approved by myself in August, at the end of August, August 28th, and then posted to the website. Now, as we all know, there's a 15-day appeal period pursuant to the policy, which we've discussed in previous meetings, which is the policy 6.4. And that, that then, so that leads us into the regular meeting, which took place on September, the regular Planning Commission meeting, which took place on September 2nd. When that meeting took place, at one point in the meeting, towards the end of the meeting, there was a straw poll taken by the commission to schedule this item for discussion. That straw poll took place, and more than two members of the Planning Commission asked for that item or requested for that item to be placed on a regular agenda. We then worked to put together a special meeting, Planning Commission meeting, which took place on September 9th. At that meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a vote taken, and that vote was three to two, for this item to be placed for Planning Commission hearing for appeal. And that is where we are at tonight. That is, that is the background that's led us from the point of approval to the appeal hearing that we are having tonight. The Director's exemption, as Chair Quelisi just mentioned, is for a refrigeration unit. Really, it's two units. Each of them are about 15 square feet in total area, occupying less than 2% of the overall square footage of the site itself, the retail site itself. It's operating both as a pharmacy and as a retail use. The pharmacy is located towards the rear of the tenant space. The proposed alcohol sales area, or the two fridges, are located really kind of to the rear of the retail space and to the east. So it's kind of tucked in the back. So that's, that's, and so it's, it's a use that is permitted within the C1. So within the C1 permitted use, however, requires a Director's, or a design review consideration and was handled through a Director's exemption because it's a change in use. A portion of that area is being modified. It's no longer retail in its own fashion, but actually within and holding an alcohol component. So within that, we're looking at it from the standpoint of, is there a parking demand that's being provided through that? And that's the reason why, within this agenda report, I also included the parking study that was done in 2006, to kind of help, kind of steer and provide that necessary background as it relates to the arcade area and the surrounding, kind of the downtown district for the City of Ojai. So that's the reason why I included that within the agenda report for tonight as a part of the appeal, to give a little bit more information and background in case there were questions that could have been raised for tonight. Staff within the Director's exemption identified that there were not additional parking, there's not an additional parking demand, given the argument and provided with, with the findings identified within the Director's exemption, that when, when you're looking at a use this minute, meaning we're talking about a use that's already being occupied with an existing space, not, not an addition, not a, not a complete change of use, where the use is going from a less intense use to a more intense use, we're talking about 2% of the overall square footage, and that was identified within the, and clarified within the, and justified within the Director's exemption. So that's, that's really, from an additional parking standpoint, that's, that's really where I wanted to clarify that point. Also, the Director's exemption identifies that it's consistent with the Ojai Municipal Code and the general plan itself. The Director's exemption is also, is also justified and exempt, categorically exempt through the California Environmental Quality Act, and that's through Section 15303. Staff is recommending that the appeal be denied and upholding the Director's exemption, which approves the project, including the sales of beer and wine for off-site consumption at the Ojai Village Pharmacy located at 202 East Ojai Avenue. As I had mentioned before, the, Mr. Summers, as well as the applicants are here tonight, I wanted to also mention that there were two public comments that were provided prior to the meeting, and those were provided to the commission as well. And both of those, so the first one that was received was from a, from a Laura Rirowen Ward. She's the publisher and chief revenue officer for the Ojai Valley News and expressed support for the pharmacy, Ojai Valley Pharmacy itself. The second one was received today, and that one came from Jamie Fleming of the, of the Ojai Chamber and expressed support for this use as well. So I wanted to make sure that both of those got in for the record as well. So with that, I turn it over to the chair. If the commission has any questions, I, actually, that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have our city attorney set the legal background for today's discussion. Matt?
Thank you, Chair. Chair and Commissioners, I wanted to cover a couple of points for you. First, to give a welcome to our two new commissioners, this is my first meeting with you. Welcome, thank you for joining, and wanted to cover a couple of points. Number one, as noted in the staff report, tonight, the city is obligated to provide the applicant a decision applying the facts of this application to the current code, to the current policy choices adopted by the city council upon prior recommendations by the Planning Commission and as approved and reviewed in public hearings. That is the baseline. It's about providing a decision applying current policy choices and current law to the facts presented by staff and is presented by the applicant. If there are commissioners who may be concerned, as was evident in the prior discussions, that the current policy is not right, or should not be right, or should be changed, that's fine, but that, the venue to do that is not this decision. Stated another way, changing the policy in the middle of the decision-making process creates a difficult record for me to defend as the city's city attorney, reserving the right to do so if I have to. The better approach is to apply the decision to the facts that are on the ground now, to the code that's on the ground now, making a decision deciding whether or not this application and these, these, this proposed change in use does or does not meet the findings and the code standards required for a change in use within the C1 zoning district to allow the placement of a refrigerator for the sale of beer and wine in an existing pharmacy. It is not the opportunity to rewrite the code and to apply standards that don't exist. Some cities have standards governing concentration of alcohol businesses, or governing minimum separations, or minimum hours requirements, or minimum, you know, numbers or types, or even drawing the lines between the different types of ABC licenses. The opportunity to make that kind of policy change is not this decision, it is not this permit. Instead, that opportunity will come, or might come, to the commission and then to the city council, each in their respective roles, as follows. Tonight, the two commissioners, if desired, could ask that a future agenda item be set for this commission to decide whether to make a recommendation to council on adjusting the city's existing alcohol policies, that is alcoholic beverage sales policies, which could include looking at the full suite of options that other cities apply and that we might apply, and could even include looking at setting some concentration limits, or setting even a CUP requirement for any alcohol sales options. But to do so in the way that's required by the code would be, commit, two members of the commission set it on a future agenda, discussion is held, recommendation goes to council, council considers it in an open meeting on an agenda, and then decides, yay, let's go rewrite the code, and comes back to the commission for a public hearing to look at a draft ordinance, and then goes back to council for a public hearing on a proposed ordinance, or council could, of course, decide they don't want to make a change. But in, the key that I wanted to emphasize for the commission to be aware of is that the commissioners are appointed by the elected members of the city council to make decisions on quasi-judicial permits like this one, where the applicant, or where the city is required to provide the applicant a decision applying the current code to the facts on the ground, and second, to make recommendations to the city council on policy changes, including zoning code amendments, and, as we'll be talking about as our second item tonight, the general plan, and the general plan updates and changes, particularly the housing and land use elements. And in that role, the Planning Commission is appointed, acted to provide expertise, wisdom, perspectives, multiple perspectives, to the council members to be aware of, but it is the council who's endowed or obligated to make the policy choices as the direct representative of the voters, as the directly elected representatives of the voters. And that's where I wanted to define those roles pretty carefully, and perhaps more directly than we did in the prior discussions on this permit, as there's some concern that making a decision that applies code that doesn't exist is harder to defend than making a decision that applies current code. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Lottis, you're on the left side.
Okay, so I don't, I don't take issue with anything Matt said, but there is a matter of perspective, perhaps, but, so do we have other examples of Director exemptions for this kind of thing?
We have done Director exemptions in the past for minor expansions of existing commercial properties. I'm not sure I'm aware of one off the top of my head that was adding alcohol sales. That's why I'm going to turn it back to Lucas. Are you aware of one in the recent past?
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes, and I, Matt, I completely agree with you, and I have no intention of trying to change policy tonight, and I'm actually pro-business, so I'm not here with the intention of trying to put somebody out of business. But part of the reason I did agree to, you know, continue with this meeting was, I know because of the process, fortunately or unfortunately, we couldn't ask any questions, and so tonight we can. And I understand, and I want to preface before I ask my questions, that I do understand that basically this was a Director's exemption, and it was based on parking, and that the alcohol is in allowed use. So my questions are more to get a better understanding of the process and to make sure I have a clear understanding of what's going on. So I just start with that. So number one, you know, if I go into the packet, the applicant or the owners of the pharmacy applied for a CUP, is that correct, as is indicated in attachment B on pages six, seven, and eight?
Yes, I believe they did apply for a CUP.
Okay, so they applied for a CUP, and then what triggered that to not happen in the fees from the CUP that looks like to get applied or transferred to the Director's exemption? What, what happened in that process that that determination was made? This is just for my understanding of how it works.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll take that one. So here's, here's the, here's the situation. In having the conversation with the applicants initially, I had looked at it and wondered if it was, in fact, a CUP. It felt like there was, there was really no other way of looking at it other than through a CUP, and here is why. Because there was a letter that was written in 1995 that ABC had provided to, to staff, and in looking at that letter, it was, it was, it was pretty clear that, at that time, that in 1995, there was a determination that was made by city council that, that in fact, there was a CUP process required in 1995 moving forward. However, in 2006, there was a major code rewrite, and within that code rewrite, and the research that I had done, and the determination that I had made, that code rewrite identified alcohol uses within the use chart for C1 as permitted. Moving forward from 2006, that use no longer carried that note that was identified in 1995 that I was using at that time as the requirement for the CUP. They initially had applied for a CUP, that's correct, but in looking at that and realizing in 2006, those rules were rewritten and identified a permitted use and not a conditionally permitted use. I then identified to them, the path forward here is, in fact, a Director's exemption for a change in use, for the minor components that we're talking about here tonight, from a parking standpoint. And, and really, it's a design review, it's DRP, which is then through the Director's exemption process. So you're correct, in terms of the full history, when I was first talking to them, we were looking at it from the CUP standpoint, not necessarily having all of the facts in front of me, as I began to dive into this and understanding the history as it went from 1995 to 2006 to where we're at today.
Okay, thank you.
The one point I'd add there, just to emphasize, is that the letter that was the original basis of this was issued by the city to ABC, the Alcoholics Beverage Commission at the state. It was subsequent council action at public hearings with Planning Commission recommendation that resulted in the new zoning ordinance, that is the basis of staff's conclusion that this use is permitted in the commercial zone.
Okay, and I have a couple more questions. And once again, this is just for clarity, for my self-understanding of how the process works. So the alcohol that's allowed for use in the commercial zone, is it just for retail, or can other properties in the commercial zone sell alcohol as well?
The allowance is for the entire zone, it's permitted in the commercial zone. For any given you, any given property, they would have to show that it's adequate and appropriate, or to state that more accurately, they'd have to meet the showing that they have adequate space to accommodate the use and that there's adequate parking to accommodate the use.
Okay, and then if it's under, I think it was that like 2.5, I forgot what the exact number was, percent of space used, then they would not have to do parking, additional parking.
Now, hold on, I want to make, I want to make it clear that the code doesn't necessarily identify that if it's less than 2%, that suddenly there is a parking that's required. Within the justification, it's identifying because of the minor amount of space or square footage, the argument is being made that the 45 square feet that's being occupied by those, those three or two, actually, it's three refrigeration units in total, but two of those are going to be used for, for the alcohol, the beer and wine use, one for beer and then one for wine. It's because of that that the argument is made, not necessarily concurrent with the code, but the justification for those findings within there.
And the other point I'll note on, thank you, Lucas, that that's, I think that's right. The other point I'll note there is that when evaluating parking, the other way to look at it is the parking demand standards in Article 14, and there, the parking demand standards do not call out separately the different kinds of retail in, that gets this far down, I should say, it does have distinctions between general retail versus garden supply stores, but in that context, it doesn't draw a distinction between general retail separate from retail with alcohol. There's, there's not a separate bar for alcohol as a separate parking standard, which is the other basis on which staff's recommendation is based, that the use.
The requirement is so many spaces per so many square feet of the retail space.
Yeah, depending on.
Regardless of what's being sold in there.
Exactly, and I'm fine with that.
That didn't change.
So when you made the determination that this was a minor use, is there a threshold that determines what minor use is?
Within our code currently?
Yeah.
No, no, and that's, and that's the justification that I was providing for, within, within this Director's exemption.
Okay, so basically, it's up to you to decide, like, if it would have been a greater amount, would it maybe have gone to the Planning Commission? Or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a judgment call, right? I mean, that's, that's the way in which the, the design review permit standards within, was it, 10 to 20, Article 20, identify? Absolutely.
And in the same way, it's a judgment call on the part of the Planning Commissioners to say, we want to or don't want to review this decision.
Right, so this is good. I still have more questions.
Absolutely, and just to, just to provide some, some clarity, even on any, any Director's exemption that I, that I provide for, I don't know that there's been one that I haven't had someone contact me, either through, through city council or through the Planning Commission, and ask, ask questions. I think that's the whole point, if there are.
Well, it is the whole point, that's where I'm coming from tonight, is I'm just trying to get clarity, not trying to stop a business, not trying to change policy, which is understand, you know, how, how it works. So the other question that I have is, and this is back to the parking, so is, is there a percentage of allowed, commercial properties that are allowed to fall under adding a change of use that's considered minor and not require additional parking?
Is there some?
Yeah, so for instance, okay, so we have this, the pharmacy came in, they're having a minor change of use, and they, they're under what you have determined to be, through a judgment call, a minor, well called a change in use, and so it does not trigger them adding additional parking, which I get, but let's just say, you know, this week, 10 additional commercial properties in the downtown come in and they want to do something, whether it's alcohol or something else, but it's a change of use, but it's a very small portion, and it's considered minor, would they in addition not have to do the parking, or is there a threshold where we say only a certain amount of, well, with that parking study, is it just a blank statement, or is there, once again, like a threshold of a minimum and maximum where that could be applied? Does that make sense?
I think I see what you're saying. So here's, here's, here's my, here's my, kind of my response to that. So when I'm, when I'm reviewing, and let's just, let's use that as an example, let's say, over the next year, we have incrementally 10 come in, each one will be reviewed on their own merits, based on location. So here, we're looking at the arcade and really kind of the downtown.
Right.
Ojai Commercial District, they, they gave a specific phrase for it, the parking study. That's not to say that we would be looking at it on this, on the same end, on the western end, or on the eastern end, which are not a part of this, this parking study. It's, it's reviewed on the merits of that proposal. Now, if we're, if within the next year, there are 10 that come in within the Ojai Arcade Downtown District, then I think each of those would look, be looked at independently, and it's, it's one of those things where, as each one comes in, we start looking at it from the standpoint of what sort of parking demand is being placed on it. Is it still a 2%, or does it suddenly become this 10, 15, 20% use change, right, in terms of what we're looking at here? That could very easily be one that I look at and say, yeah, what we're looking at here is a little bit more than what I feel comfortable with approving at, at staff level or at the Director's level. Let's, let's have the, the commission weigh in on this and see, see where, see where it lies, from a findings justification standpoint, right? So that, that's the way, if I was to look at it that way, in terms of using the 10 as a, kind of a matter of, of point, just 10 in general, all within the arcade, you're looking at stacking, basically stacking it at that point, right? And each one begins to compound the issue.
Right.
And it's on a case-by-case scenario, like I was saying before.
Okay, and I think this might be my last question for the moment. So I know in the report, the, the new use is considered a compatible use with the pharmacy, and how, how did you determine that? And that, once again, doesn't have to be, it could be in another property that's not selling alcohol, but it's something completely different. So for instance, I, let's say I own the pet store, or I own the toy store, or I own a women's dress shop, or an art gallery, would that become an issue of compatible use if I wanted to sell alcohol, or something a little bit different from what I am presently selling retail?
Yeah, I think, and, and that's a good, that's a good question, I think that's a good point. And looking at the Ojai Pharmacy, I went in, experienced the space, walked the aisles, and, and had a conversation with the applicant, because I wanted to understand what sort of an impact an alcohol use such as this, whether it's two fridges, whether it's two beers that are being sold for off-site consumption. I wanted to experience the space and understand it. So from a retail standpoint, it fits into the mold of a retail use, no different than how a grocery store would operate, right? There are retail goods being sold onsite. I think that's slightly different than if we have a pet store and you're also selling alcohol, or presuming to sell alcohol within that. I think we'd look at it, we would look at it slightly different. I mean, I certainly would, in terms of how I would be reviewing that, and that's maybe something that, that would get kicked to the Planning Commission for review and consideration. Are there findings for that type of use within that type of scenario? Like I said before, it's on a case-by-case scenario. I wouldn't say it's a blanket, blanket statement. Is the use, is the use as it exists a, a compatible use as an intensification? A, a compatible use as an intensification of use? Um, from a parking standpoint? I think we need to look at that, certainly, on a case by case scenario.
So I guess, and then back to the, the pharmacy. So what, what was your determination? You looked at what they're selling, I mean, I know they have a pharmacy and apparently they have retail items. So what are the retail items that are compatible with beer and wine sales? That made you think, oh, that's compatible. And I'm just, once again, thinking if something comes to the planning commission, I'm gonna have a better understanding of. How to, how to make or.
Yeah, I, I mean, generally, I mean, I, I don't know that I want to say, say it's because of these specific types of uses that made me feel comfortable. It's just that, it's a general statement of there are retail goods that are being sold there, those retail goods that are being sold there. Um, have a nexus with alcohol. Period.
Another way to think about it is if we look at a comparative example. A Rite Aid or a CVS or another that kind of um. Sundry's store.
Okay.
Typically would have pharmacy and. Um, food products and alcohol and similar household type goods. That's not an uncommon combination. And that might have been the basis of Mr. Seber's decision. The other point I wanted to note, if I could make a quick further point. Thinking about parking, our sta, our code does not have a, a standard for pharmacy and it does not have a standard for alcohol retail. But it does have a standard for medical clinics or offices. Uh, and that's defined as medical services, clinics, offices or labs. The best approximation here will be office. That standard is one space per two hundred square feet of area or five per thousand square feet. General retail is one per two fifty, two hundred fifty square feet of area or four per thousand, a lower standard. So in this case, to the extent that the consideration is parking, the commission might note in your evaluation. That the standard for general retail parking is lower than the standard for pharmacy parking. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, so um, sorry, Lucas, I am going to bring this up. Um, so in terms of the permitted use. Could either Lucas or Matthew comment? You know, okay, if we look, you know, if we're going by current code and sort of the constraints that exist currently.
As we must.
As we must. Um, in the C one zone, you know, what is permitted in the C one is in terms of alcoholic beverages. It's alcoholic beverage sales. On site, not off site. In every, and then in the other two zones, it's a CUP and BP and VMU, but in the C one, it's permitted only. The, the only thing that's actually specified is alcoholic beverage sales on site. So how is this a permitted use?
Happy to explain that. Staff's conclusion is that this is a permitted use, subject of course to commission's confirmation. Because. General retail is a permitted use in the commercial zone. General retail is not defined to exclude alcohol. And there's no definition elsewhere in the code that defines the opposite of alcoholic beverage sales offsite. Alcoholic beverage sales onsite. Only one of those two is listed in the code. The absence of it in the code. Uh, under permissive zoning. The absence of a particular land use on permissive zoning means it's prohibited, correct? However. If that use is within another use that is listed, then it's permitted. And staff's conclusion, subject to commission ratification, is that general retail includes. Alcohol sales. So too is convenience and liquor stores. Liquor, of course, automatically includes alcohol. That is also a permitted use in the C one zone. As is grocery store, which also typically includes alcohol sales. Based on those conclusions, staff concludes that alcohol sales are a permitted use within the C one zone, subject of course. To the issuance of a. Design review permit for the change in use, including accounting for adequate parking for that change in use if. And as required, particularly in accounting for the expected increase in demand that may or may not come. Uh, if they, alcohol sales are added to an existing property.
So, okay, so we're equating. This to a convenience and liquor store?
I think equating the use to the use.
To a convenience and liquor store?
Yeah, it was, that was a part of the off.
Yeah, I don't know, okay. I, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand.
Yeah, and here's, here's the other thing that I want to also preface. Typically, typically, not always, but typically, within the use chart, there are definitions to help guide. Um, us as a community, as myself, as the commission, in terms of, of what each of these, these terms mean. Unfortunately, with alcohol use onsite, that term is not defined within our code. Currently. So it leaves it up for discussion. Um, justification, which is what I, which I provided here. On site, does onsite mean onsite consumption? Or does onsite mean onsite purchase with offsite consumption?
Right.
That's not clarified yet.
Okay, but, but, but there has been no, there's been no council stated policy on this issue. Or any, has there been any? Approval of a project or anything where the, this policy, it kind, kind of has been expressed and confirmed?
The policy being approving an expansion of a pharmacy to include alcohol sales by director's exemption?
Well, alcohol sales is a permitted use through, through, um, you know. I mean, I, through, through the position that you've just stated.
Alcohol sales currently within the use chart is a permitted use.
I think the other.
Alcohol beverage sales is limited to onsite as a permitted use. That's what's clearly stated in the zoning code. But has council stated its policy otherwise?
I would suggest the focus on convenience and liquor stores, which is defined in ten two thirty-six oh two, sub C thirteen. To, um, it's short, I'll just read it. Convenience and liquor stores, retail stores of generally thirty-five hundred square feet or less in gross floor area. Which sell alcoholic beverages for offsite consumption. And or carry a range of merchandise oriented to convenience and traveler shopping needs.
Is this some?
Definition.
Definitions, okay.
That's in the definition section, yeah, in ten, uh, ten to thirty-six oh two, um, in that long definition section. And so that would be staff's position for why there is support for the commission to conclude, if you so do. That the current council policy incorporates. Sales of alcoholic beverages for offsite consumption as permitted use in the C one zone. And I would also note that. You might also take a look at the fact that that numeric limitation, that size limitation of thirty-five hundred square feet or less. Is met by this application.
I, I'm sorry, Matt. Um, so what's the, what's the term that I should be looking for?
Um, it's convenience and liquor stores.
Oh, okay, convenience.
And that's under, uh, the, the Cs.
Thirteen, okay.
Is that, is it liquor and convenience stores or is it convenience and liquor?
Convenience and liquor stores. It's under the C section of definition.
Yeah, in, in the, the, in the definition sections under the Cs. And then I think in the code, it's listed under. I'm not, I can be discretion. Uh, I think in the table, it's listed under, um.
Probably in five oh three or somewhere like that, ten two five oh three?
Yeah, it'll be in the table. It's in table two, yeah, ten, table two point four in section ten two five oh three. Which, uh, for those following along at home, is the. Land use table in the commercial and manufacturing districts, which lays out what the allowed land uses are. And what the requirements are by, for permit types and some footnotes that add further limitations in the. Uh, five commercial and manufacturing districts, C one, business professional, village mixed use. Manufacturing and manufacturing plan development.
So, so that's a staff determination, basically, that we're talking about, right?
That is our recommendation, yes. And it is as staff's determination, subject of course. The commission is empowered to, uh, make a decision and we would urge you to make your decision applying the current code.
With staff determination. I mean, staff, yeah, with staff determination. I mean, okay, let's see, we just got done saying that. Hey, and believe me, I want to state right here and now, because there were some comments about this earlier. I am not a prohibitionist. I'm not approaching this from any kind of. Like alcohol is bad point of view. I'm looking at this issue as a, from a resident and a, and a concern for the. The community as a whole and now in, in the long term. And, uh, within the constraints of our existing policies and our, our previous decisions on. On things that are included in the zoning codes. I just want to make that very clear, so. Um, but, so, so. Let's see, the, the, the store is proposing like. Two percent. What was the percentage of area taken up by the refrigerator is?
Yeah, no more than forty-five per feet.
So two percent of the pharmacy is dedicated to beer and wine, so. Based on staff's judgment, that qualifies it as a convenience and liquor store. That's what we're saying.
I think they're saying it's a similar use. Uh, but I, I'm presuming all the planning commissioners have been to the pharmacy. And seen the area in question. There are actually three freezer, three cooler units there, one of which has non-alcoholic beverages in it. The other two which are currently empty. And that's where they're proposing to do these sales.
I, I'm just, I'm just. I understand what staff is saying. I understand a judgment call. Um, it's just, you know, we're talking about two percent of a store area and now we're calling it. We're saying it qualifies as a convenience and liquor store, but really it's a pharmacy. With some retail and ancillary liquor sale. I'm just. I'm just saying, I think that. Since we're talking about staff level judgments, I think there is room for other judgments on this thing unless, unless. There is something that can be pointed to in terms of council policy, council, council, um, implementation of a decision. That incorporates this kind of. I, I, so I think it's, I think it's a fair issue to open for discussion. That's, that's really what I'm saying, because.
Okay.
I wanted to.
Commissioner, yes.
Yeah, um, I mean, really, because we weren't, you know, due to our, um, required process, we couldn't ask any questions prior to that. They wrote that report, some of the questions we've asked tonight, we found out more information that wasn't even in the report. So it's really, and from my perspective. I'm just trying to understand how, how it all works and how a determination is made. And then, you know, we will, we will make a vote tonight on this. But I think it will also, at least my opinion, uh, may direct us to indeed as, um. Mr. Summers pointed out. Asked him if we can agendaize it, because there's some things that I think may need a little more clarity. For the community as a whole. This just happens to be an example, but I, I wanted to thank staff for, you know, answering these questions. It's, it's helping me. I mean, there's some things I'm not sure that I'm completely clear on, and, but I know that you've had to make this determination and, um. You know, let's, we can continue, but thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners for staff?
Well, I have one more question, unless somebody else has a question, go ahead.
Well, I have one. Uh, as I understand from reading the director's exemption. There are two potential issues in play here. One is a change of use. Uh, that is adding a permitted use to the current permitted uses in this retail space. And the other potentially is. A requirement for additional parking. Does either one of those by the code? Require. A. Discretionary decision or is, is either of those or both of those ministerial decisions? I, I'm, I'm trying to understand why it came to the point where a director's exemption was necessary. In this request and, and so maybe there are other factors in play here as well. But I see those two and I'm trying to understand if either of those or some third factor. Is what caused this to be. A discretionary decision that could then be subject to a director's exemption.
Right, let me, let me take a stab at that and then, um. Mr. Summers, if you want to weigh in as well, I'm fine with that. So here's the, here's the situation in terms of how, how I, I looked at it and then drew, drew my conclusions. And provided the justification. With it falling into a change in use regardless of the percentage, it's, right now it's two percent, right? That's what we're looking at here approximately. Forty-five square feet of a, of approximately twenty-five hundred square foot.
Thirty, actually. The other fifteen is already in use for non.
Oh, that's true. It's actually only thirty square foot. You're correct, you're correct. So it's actually less, like it was stated, it's less than two percent. So within that, within that parameter, it fall. I see it falling into the category of a change in use regardless of the percentage. That falls into a discretionary review because. There in itself, there are findings that have to be made. Findings that, that show it as a consistency through the Ojai municipal code. Findings that show its consistency with the general plan. Those have been argued and provided within this director's exemption for, um, the appeal consideration for the commission. That's, in terms of ministerial versus, ministerial is simply, you meet the standards. Code standards, whatever those, those standards are, whether they're in the, in the code or, um, building standards, whatever those happen to be. Meet those, you move forward. Here, we're looking at meeting the standards, but also identifying where there are specific findings. Justification for those findings or this specific use that can be made. That's the, that's drawing the distinction between ministerial and discretionary.
Okay, so the parking was, the parking didn't really throw this into a discretionary. Basket. It was the change of use.
I would say, I would say by, by, that, I could say that both of them hold hands in terms of how we look at it. Because you're, you're looking at a change in use. And then you're also justifying that, that there isn't a need for additional parking, that the parking there is justified. And that's the reason why here with this agenda report, I also included. The, uh, the parking study that was done for this area in two thousand and six.
The only point I would add is that under our design review permit code sections, ten to two thousand and three. Sub A four. Any change in use of a commercial or industrial building. That would require additional parking is a discretionary permit requirement. For a designer view permit. However. That designer view permit can be, be approved in one of two ways. One, full scale designer view permit, planning commission, public hearing, whole shebang, or two. Minor director's exemption approval, the director finding it minor. And, um, both of those are discretionary permits and what's triggered that is a change in use. That will require additional parking and the city's longstanding position on that. Is that anything, any change in use in an existing commercial or industrial building. Uh, might require additional parking and requires evaluation as such. Uh, even as here, of course, it was concluded that it didn't need extra parking spaces. But it kicks it out of a pure zoning clearance, which would be ministerial.
Okay, so even though the parking standards are based on square footage of the retail space. The change in use means you still have to review parking. For that space, even though the space hasn't changed.
Right, you take a look at it and assess what the, what the parking standards are as, uh, applied for the use. And to use an extreme example, if you took something. That had a very low parking standard and you switched it to another permitted use that would have a much higher parking standard. Without changing the building exterior. That would be a change in use that, that necessitates additional parking. That would require a designer view permit. And that would require figuring out how to deal with that added parking.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel like I understand the rule better now. Any more questions for staff? All right.
One more question. So, um, under the findings, um. With regard to general plan consistency, it does, uh. There is a finding that does say, that talks about over concentration of establishments, that it would not result in a detrimental over concentration of establishments, so. that it would not result in a detrimental over concentration of establishments. So so there is policy or there's something that uh is behind this finding. Do you want to, could you just elaborate on that a little bit more on the on the finding there?
Can you um note the citation for which finding you're looking at?
Yeah, it's on page two of ten, attachment B. Um under the findings and and we're talking about that the proposed use under general plan consistency, there's number two and then number three. This is number three.
Yes, so that finding is staff's recommendation and the the point that's worth noting is that finding is uh rooted in uh staff's recommendation that the existing retail use is just an accessory use. It's not one of the findings that's directly required for approval of either a designer view permit nor a designer view permit through director's exemption. And I think that's where that that finding is staff's structure for how to assess the general plan policy, which speaks to compatibility.
Okay.
Okay, if we're, if we're uh through for the moment, we're not deliberating yet, but if we have finished questions for staff, then I think it's time to open the public hearing. Although this is a discussion item, how do we have a how do we have a public hearing? This is a discussion item.
It's a discussion item, not a public hearing, but we're, we we are obligated to take public comment. As was done through email, and then we also have the applicant. I believe two reps of the applicant present.
Right.
May not have had a comment or two.
All right, well, if we're through for the moment, then let's hear from the applicants. And I don't know, oh, I'm sorry, John, did you want to?
Yeah, I just had one more quick question for Matthew, just clarity.
Sure.
And I I I just wanted to, for everybody to clarify, if if we decide as a as a planning committee to um move forward with the appeal, um the applicant can still um would would then be required to provide parking or they would be required to pay some sort of fee because they don't have the parking. Is that correct?
Uh would depend on what exactly the commission did. So if the commission were to find that the permit standards have not been met, is vote to deny the application, then that decision would go uh would would be final unless appealed up to council. I can almost guarantee that it will be appealed to council. Uh and council would then face the same questions you face, whether to affirm or deny the appeal and grant or deny the permit. Um if there is concern on parking, the commission could also approve it with the condition finding that there is parking required and set uh some amount of parking to be added or some amount of parking and luffy to be paid. So you could always conditionally approve the permit as an as a bit of a middle ground option. Uh although uh it would be query what that, what would the requirement for added parking look like? Uh when, well, that would be the question. But that'd be another option. But it won't, it it wouldn't automatically mean that they would have to come in and add parking, because if if the appeal is granted and the permit is denied, they would have a denial and not be allowed to install or to uh add alcohol to the current fridges. And then, of course, I can guarantee it'll go to council.
Gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to get clarity on that. Thank you.
Okay, uh let's hear from the applicants then. And I'm I'm sorry, uh sir and madam, uh Lucas knows your names better than I do, but I don't know which of you would prefer to speak first. You can choose.
I definitely would like Dr. Kingsley to speak first. Thank you.
I am ready. Is it now?
Please go ahead, sir.
My name is King Little Ross. Um first of all, I would like to thank all of you commissioners, the city attorney, and a big thank you to Lucas and his staff. Um you 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 humble me. You've been spending so much time, two meetings now, to consider our application. And you know, you know all the codes and all those kind of things. We just want to be able to sell a little, a few little six packs of beer here and there to our customers. What I would like to tell you is that we've been at this for for about eleven months now. We started this process in October of two thousand and nineteen last year, two months after we purchased the pharmacy. When we purchased the pharmacy, the previous owner was about to sell it to Rite Aid and Rite Aid was going to close it down. Yes. Close down the Ojai Village Pharmacy that's been standing here for about eighty plus years. When we saw that the the site, you know, the the facility, what was going on here, that could not be. So we took it over and we we promised the owner that we would not close it down. And he decided to un-sign his signed purchase agreement with Rite Aid and sell it to us. We're committed, you know, to making the 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 pharmacy survive. So we've added a few things. We wanted to add alcohol. That's what, like I said, we've been at it for eleven months. We've added, you know, the ability for the pharmacy to to provide vaccinations to the community. And we'll do, we'll do other things. We 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 remodel the area to the interior to make it more nicer, make it more appealing. We're not going anywhere. We are here. In the during those eleven months that we've applied, you know, we've gone through the ABC office in Ventura, we've heard from the ABC office in Sacramento. And when it comes to the planning committee meeting, planning commission office at the city, it's come to the point where, you know, if anybody know how I called the planning office in the city, I'm sure Sherry would answer the phone and say, this is Sherry, planning committee, whatever it is. When I call, you'll be surprised. Sherry just said, hi, Kingsley. And the reason that happened is because we've been at this for so long. We've been through so much. And I think we're looking for a positive, a positive conclusion, you know, from 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 you. Of course, your diligence, your consideration is so appreciated. We truly, truly are humble, you know, for just trying to decide on our behalf. I will stop.
Okay, Melina?
Um hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. Here, let me, let me get my camera a little bit better here. Um I'm not going to say too much because I'm 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 very frustrated. Uh unlike Dr. Kingsley, who is very, very positive and um he he, you know, he he has a lot of uh experience and background with with a lot. You know, he's got a PhD and and he's a scientist. So he's very political, uh but I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated because I felt like I've been discriminated against. Uh we we're trying to survive. We're trying to make the pharmacy survive. We're following the same model that a lot of other pharmacies uh do. And this is just something so minute. And um it is something that, and and let me put it plainly, we would not put anything in our store that other people don't want to have. We want to make good business decisions. And the reason why we're we were making those decisions is because this is what our public in city of Ojai wants. Um we're doing vaccines, we're doing everything that that people of Ojai want. So to feel like we are we're we're put so many obstacles to to prevent something so small, uh it almost feels personal. It feels, to me, it feels like there's a personal agenda against us. And I and I don't feel it's right. So I'm going to end it at this. And um and I'm just going to leave it up to the commissioners to decide. But I'm not going to um go away uh without a fight. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Uh do any commissioners have any questions for either of the applicants? Seeing none, then we'll close that portion of the meeting and bring the discussion back to the commission. Um I think Matt pretty well described the uh the legal ground that we're walking on right now and also described the possibilities for recommending changes to the rules in the future if that's the commission's pleasure. But I'd like to hear from each of the commissioners about this case and uh and then, once we've made a decision on this case, uh your feelings about what might be done, if anything, to um make recommendations to the city council about different rules in the future. Uh so let's start with Commissioner Lottis.
Well, um I I I just want to say to the applicants, I only wish them the best. And um they have a fantastic location in the downtown. Um I know the residents really love that pharmacy there. Um and uh I think that um uh there there, if they feel like they need help in terms of retail opportunity, what might be uh good um retail opportunity in that area. Um I think there's, I think there are resources out there and lots of help. And I did go to a conference a year ago or so sponsored by either Rotary or Chamber of Commerce, where there were experts that were brought in talking exactly about uh that issue, retail opportunity in the downtown. And um I would just encourage the applicant to um pursue that kind of um assistance if they would like that. And I uh anyway, but on, so so believe me, I I I'm very sympathetic to what they're saying. I understand that. But but as a planning commissioner, um I am looking at this um as a use, not just for this site, but what uh I do think that there are, there are some uh precedent-setting uh issues here that we that we have kind of been talking about and touching on uh that need to be considered and um uh that I forgot what I was going to say, but um that.
We're concentrating more on on the issue of over-concentration.
That, yes, and and perhaps there are consequences that um that are tied to an approval of this kind of project that we really need to thoroughly vet. So it's, there is nothing, I didn't even, I don't even know personally know these applicants. Uh so believe me, there is nothing personal against the applicants. It's it's uh it's an issue of um talking about the the issues that this proposal brings up and really, really thinking them through. Um so so I I I the going from that to the the actual project and the decision, I still have problems making um making the findings. And that's um, I can elaborate on that, but I do have problems with making the findings.
The finding that there is not a detrimental over-concentration of establishments serving alcoholic beverages?
Yes, um I have trouble making a finding, so both the general plan and uh the finding with the zoning that um I, let's see, they, the part um the proposed alcohol use is compatible with existing uh the pharmacy and retail use. Um I think that there are some precedent-setting issues here that do, that are tied to the staff interpretation of what's ancillary. Um I think there are certainly uh uh many other shops that might um um also want to do the same thing um in the downtown. I think that um this use will actually serve primarily tourists with off-site sales. And which means to me that there's certainly a possibility that where do, once you buy your six pack, where do you go to drink it? Um in the nearby areas, all prohibit alcohol beverages, I believe, such as the Arcade and Libby Park. So um I I just don't see this as a as a place where a resident is going to go buy their six pack of beer for their barbecue, their backyard barbecue. I just.
Okay, I I I really have to interrupt you with all the respect, Commissioner Lottis. We have.
We have, we have, we have closed the discussion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to comment. Okay, I just wanted to comment on tourists versus.
Discussion to the public, and they might choose to do so, given the limited amount of time we've had or the uh the confines of the electronic meeting, but.
I I would like an opportunity to also defend and 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 correct if I if I if I hear something that is that is inaccurate, because we're not serving tourists. This is.
Hold on, this, hold on. Back to the chair. Chair, run the meeting, please.
Thank you.
Wish to reopen public comment, perhaps after Commissioner Lottis has finished her comments. We must let commissioners finish their comments.
Right.
Okay, um uh let's see, uh just expressing my concerns, um. Yeah, I do, I personally, uh my point of view is that I do see it as more of a tourist-serving use and I and I with off-site sales, I wonder where the tourists would be going to drink their six pack of beer. Um and and whether or not that would not, in fact, result in a possible increase in in need for police services. And I also question um I also question the staff interpretation on um whether whether this is actually a permitted use. So those are, those are that that's a brief summary of kind of where I am, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um I I would say, uh for full disclosure, about four or five days ago, I called the chief of police, Chief Rivera, to ask him, to say that this issue was coming up at a planning commission meeting and asked him about not his thoughts about the issue per se, but simply for data relating to the issue. And he gave me the following, and I'll I'll quote back from my phone log here. In two thousand and nineteen, there were a total of seventeen DUI citations issued by the Ojai Police Department, which covers not just the city, but about twice that area, including the sphere of influence and perhaps more than that. A a total of nineteen DUIs. Uh this year to date, a total of twelve. And his characterization was that the majority of those were local residents, city residents or valley residents at least, uh not tourists. In addition, he said there was a smaller number than nineteen last year or twelve this year to date of citations for public drunkenness. And those are primarily, he said, homeless persons, not city residents, not tourists. So that's data that I was able to gather, and it's something that we may wish to consider as we go through this. Let's see. Yes, sir, Matt?
Thank you. I wanted to put one point on the table for the commission to consider. The question of whether the use is permitted, you have staff's recommendation. That is on your, within your discretion. Do you find the use a permitted use or not? The concern raised regarding tourism, however, I would push back on as not within the current code. Nothing in the current code sets one rule for tourism-serving businesses and another rule for local serving businesses. Nothing in the general plan does so either. The general plan at length speaks to providing adequate facilities to serve both tourists and in-town residents, but it does not draw distinctions for findings between those two. I would be concerned that that basis for any decision would be difficult to defend. Thank you.
Okay. Uh Commissioner Owen?
Um I agree with um some of the points that Commissioner Lottis brought up. Um I think the challenge, you know, for me was that, you know, by by reading the staff report, I was reading something, and then when I asked my questions, I was getting some information that wasn't included in the report. And that kind of gets back to the determination of um you know, the judgment calls, et cetera, and kind of like tracing it back into the code of of does this fall under a convenient liquor store, is it retail, et cetera? So I I think there's some ambiguity there, and I do understand that there is, you know, a level of discretion. So I, I think there's some ambiguity there, and I do understand that there is, you know, a level of discretion that needs to be put in. And I, I think the way to address that is for us to hopefully agendize not only that, but even the parking, et cetera, et cetera. There was more than one topic that came up tonight. But at the same time, I, you know, I realized that the permit was awarded to the applicant, you know, no fault of theirs, and I, you know, I understand them trying to maximize on their retail. I'm, I'm tending to go towards addressing those other items at a later date. And then I would like to hear what my fellow commissioners respond to.
Okay, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this for a while, and, you know, I think there, there could be, and maybe this is something that we can discuss later, is it seems to be an issue with this particular exemption is, you know, gray areas and confusion on what qualifies for a director's exemption and what does not. It seems to be that there are some, you know, it's, it's kind of vague, and it's up to opinion, which is okay, but I think we just need to get a little more clarity on that process and how that actually works. With that said, I'm not in disagreement with the findings of the director's exemption. I actually support it. I think it's something that is, alcohol sales are allowed in the C1 zone. So if it's a change in our, our code, if it's a, if it's a change in our policy, I think that's something that needs to be addressed with city council. I think that's something that needs to be addressed at a future date. I think we need to adhere to what our current code says. And with that, I, I support the the denial of this permit and the approval of the director's exemption.
Denial of the
I think you might mean, Mr. Trent, the denial of
Sorry, yes, yes, denial of the appeal and approval of the permit, yes.
Commissioners Swift?
Hi, I agree with a lot of what Lottis has to say about the concerns. However, I, I do believe that Lucas did a good job with the director's exemption. He did his homework, he did his research. Tears were crossed, his eyes were dotted, and I think he did a good job. And I think in the previous meetings, because I am kind of, I am new to this, I wasn't fully understanding everything that I know now with this meeting. I think this meeting was very helpful and informational. So, yeah, this has really cleared things up for me, but I, I do have concerns about the same things that Kay, that Kay brought up, and I do think that maybe we do follow up on current policies and maybe address this at a later date. But I think moving forward, I, I think, yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Trent as well. So I'm kind of in the middle, but I think we should address all this stuff later. I did have one, one question, though. As far as the parking report, I noticed that it's 2006. How often do those reports get taken?
There was one about
We're both smiling because we don't have a defined, updated every couple of years requirement. Obviously, we would like to update those parking studies more often than 14 years. And I believe the, the contract entered into last year for the general plan update does include, among other things, taking a look at a new parking and traffic study to create some baseline data to advise this commission and the council as you, you two bodies rewrite the general plan and subsequent zoning code update.
Sure, I think, I think that would help, you know, obviously with all these decision makings to have more current data.
Oh, agreed.
And, okay. My turn then, I guess. I understand and I respect Commissioner Lottis's concerns about over-concentration. I don't believe that there is a viable standard anywhere in the code right now that provides a basis for denying the permit. I think it's worthy of planning commission consideration if we want to recommend to city council that, that there be specific standards, if that can be done, about either over-concentration or a clarification of alcoholic beverage sales onsite and offsite. I think those are both valid areas for planning commission discussion and recommendation as we see fit to the city council. But having said that, I don't see a basis in the code right now for denying the permit. And so I would deny the appeal and grant the permit. Any other discussion? Then I would like to entertain a motion either to approve or deny the appeal that is the subject of tonight's meeting. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Nolan?
All right, I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the appeal and uphold the director's exemption and determination finding the project exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act and approving the proposed sale of beer and wine at the Village Pharmacy located at 202 East Ohio Avenue, period. And then I would like to make, I know this is separate from the motion, but afterwards, a recommendation based on a further discussion.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that's clear to everyone. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Very good, Commissioner Trent. Any more discussion of that motion? All right, Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
No.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Nolan, you wanted to make an additional motion related to this issue, but, but not directly
Yeah, not directly, exactly. And that would be that we bring it back for discussion, and I think it's, it looks like it's kind of a complex, broad topic here. I think it includes the parking. I think it includes the alcohol sale and thresholds. And so I don't know if this would be brought back as one item or if we'd be separated out. But also even the determination for ancillary or compatible businesses. Does there need to be more information? Does there also need to be more information, for instance, on this project? We, you know, it was, it's a pharmacy and retail, but only through further questioning do we find out that there was, you know, the, looking at the charts for a convenient liquor, et cetera. So it feels like there just needs to be more clarity in the code, and like I said, I'm not sure if we bring it back is one thing, I mean, this is what came out of this one project. Or if those are separate items, and there may be more that I'm missing, but I'm, I'm kind of putting a motion out there that we continue this topic.
Okay, a couple, a couple of things then. I would ask, Matt, do we need a motion? Or do we need two commissioners saying we should agendize this topic at a future meeting?
It's just two commissioners asking for it to be agendized. And if I could be so bold
I'll add my name to that. That makes two of us right there.
There's two, and if I could
So direction to staff would be look at the topic, do a little research, bring us some data, and agendize this at an appropriate time.
I think that would, we will go forth and conquer, and as I, we have had significant discussion on these issues and even more brought up tonight. And I will, thank you, Commissioner Lottis, for bringing up a couple of different points on these definitions. It seems clear to me that we need to look at three areas of this, and maybe we do it in three meetings, or we, we'll think about that a little bit more than this moment, but I see three areas. One is what are the city's policies regarding alcohol sales? When it's allowed, where it's allowed, under what permits, under what regulations? Baked into that is adding some of these definitions. I had to go a couple of lines in, a couple of sections in to get to onsite, offsite sales.
Right.
And so I think, when is it allowed, where, what rules, what regulations? Topic number two would be the director's exemption, this discussion, the code is, the director finds minor. Do we want to set, do we want to leave it that broad to the judgment of the director, or do we want to set some bounds? Or not me, but the commission and then council set some bounds on that and fill in some of that gap. And then two would be this question of ancillary or compatible uses, and that might be subsumed in the other two. But are there, is there a definition? Do we want to look at some standards? We kind of have somewhat vague language right now about accessory. So that might be three areas that would be reasonable to take a look at stemming from this process that have been identified as future policy choices to evaluate as such.
Okay, that, I think those three areas are, are ripe for consideration by the planning commission. And Lucas, you have, you have direction from the commission to go forth with Matt and, and educate us so that we can make some good decisions at a future meeting.
And could I just add one, one other point, too, I think? The, the the policy on appeals of director exemptions, or did, did you include that, Matt? But I think it's very cumbersome. It require, it ends up resulting in a timeframe that's far, that's much, that's more extended than it needs to be. And it should be rewritten in such a way that, that this kind of appeal can happen quickly. You know, in the time that I've been on the commission, we haven't had any director exemptions appealed, so it doesn't happen very often. But that is the right of the planning commission to review a decision by staff. And I want that, you know, that is our, that is, that is our responsibility. And I think we need to be able to impose it when we feel that it's appropriate. And we need to have a good policy that doesn't make it like a three-step process that takes two months or whatever. So I don't know, I mean, that's more of a council
Yeah, I think that would be something we put on the council agenda. I'd be happy to work with city manager and the mayor on when that should get scheduled, and we certainly had some discussions about what that's gonna look like. As is perhaps obvious, it's 20% policy and 80% political policy as to how to structure the appeal process, but there's some options there that we can take a look at, and council can make some choices. So, yeah, we, we can add that to the list. And because it's in the zoning code, it'll ultimately include a planning commission and public hearing as well. But, yeah, we'll add that to the list. I think that would be certainly a fourth category, appeal policy.
The other thing that tends to stretch out these schedules is the requirement for publication of notices in a local newspaper ten days prior to our meeting. Which turns out, because we have a weekly paper, it's at least 12 days prior, and it's actually 14 days prior to meet the deadline for publication in the weekly paper. So that's, that's a two-week delay right there. And I think we need to, we need to balance the question of efficiency, to be fair to the applicants, with the question of process, and I'm sure that the 10-day thing is part of the Brown Act, right, Matt?
Not the Brown Act, that one is state planning and zoning law.
Oh, okay.
Some flexibility there. We can take a look at that as well.
Okay.
Brown Act only requires three days for a regular meeting or one day for a special meeting. It's, the 10 days is the state planning and zoning law, but that only applies to certain permits. We've extended it to all of them, or not all of them, more of them. There's some flexibility there we can take a look at.
That, I think that would be instructive for the commission as well to understand what drives the schedules, either on noticing public hearings or noticing appeals or whatever. And I would personally like to see some means of incorporating some or all of this policy 6.4 into the code.
Yes.
Even, even if just by reference, so that members of the public, not, not least of whom are all of us commissioners, know that the provisions of that administrative policy are actually publicly available. Okay, I, I think we're about through with this issue. Before we move on to the next issue, I wanted to directly address the two applicants. I think you understand at this point that the commission has denied the appeal and approved your permit. Contact Lucas, and he will, he will tell you if there's anything more that you need to do at this point in order to affect this change of use in your retail space. Is that about right? Lucas or, or Matt?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, very good, very good. Souza, you looked like you wanted to have something to say.
He's on mute.
You're on mute. Can you
Listening intently. I have no comment at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's, let's move on then.
Oh, you're on mute, I think.
Look like he's on mute.
The volume of your microphone went way down.
We had that happen last time.
Oh, yeah. Remember that?
Can't hear you, Steve. Oh, you might have to call in. That's what he did last time.
Yeah.
He's going to the phone.
Okay.
I think.
Backup.
Yeah, I think that we have the backup, right?
If I could be so bold, while he's getting the phone set, the next item is, of course, item two, the general plan update. Lucas might introduce the item.
Yeah, I, I just want to give a little bit of information, some background. Just, just so the commission is aware, we are gearing up, when I say we, I mean staff, is gearing up to launch the, the general plan update. I know it's been discussed. I want to say even a few months back, several months back, I want to say back in February, I presented the general plan update. We had a pretty riveting conversation going back and forth in terms of planning commission's role, what the general plan is, what it serves, how, you know, how it furthers the community now and into the future. Expect that conversation, not only with my bright cheery face, but with the consultant as well, Rainian Associates will be here to present. And we're looking at that actually coming forward on the 7th of October at our next meeting next week, so be ready for that. The, and in fact, tomorrow night, it is being heard and discussed before the rec commission, Parks and Rec Commission, so that's actually happening tomorrow night. So expect, you will be seeing this as a discussion item, informational item for, for the commission for next week, so it's we're gearing up here. Expect to be, to be wowed, and, and expect to have to be looking for feedback from this commission, but not just this commission, but all commission, the council, the community as a whole, so.
Lucas, just for clarity, we can address the, the alcohol sale density of the downtown quarter in the general plan, right? That's something that we could bring up?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right.
So, yeah, that's, that's the update that I have. That's the big surprise that I have for, for the general plan update. So it is, we are, I've been in meetings these last, this last month and a half gearing up for it, so it's definitely starting. That's it.
And the other
Does anybody have any questions regarding it at this point?
One quick point I'll add before, while folks are thinking of their questions. The other question that came up, of course, tonight is parking, and that's been a continuous question. Parking standards in the downtown commercial area, parking standards in the more suburban residential areas, and in the interfaces, the village mixed-use and other areas where, where one flows into the other and the other flows in. The parking standards can also be updated in the general plan element, a general plan update, and in the land use ordinance changes to follow. So it's another opportunity to have the same discussions we're having tonight, but with everything on the table.
Yep. Chair Colossi, can you, do you have audio?
I thought I did, but I apparently don't. Oh, you can now, good, okay. Very good. Just I, I want to be sure I heard you accurately, Lucas. You said tomorrow at the Parks and Rec Commission and October 7th at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission, the consultants, Rainian Company, will be making a presentation. at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission, the consultants, Rainey and company will be making a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Um, and then, quick question. If we do have, um, recommendations for the general plan, do we have to wait until after the presentations or can we make, um, recommendations ahead of those?
I, I would, I wouldn't necessarily call them. I mean, they are recommendations. They're comments. Uh, they are accepting comments at this point. It is, it is a, um.
It's an open forum.
It's an open forum.
Forum, interactive presentation, it sounds like. Okay, great.
And I'll just note for, um, the commissioners and the public, the general plan update is a legislative item on which you are expected and allowed to have opinions and to express them before the hearings come. It's distinct from, uh, tonight's permanent other applications where it's quasi-traditional and you have to keep an open mind until you hear the matter, kind of sitting as a court. On the general plan, you're sitting as a legislative body, making recommendations to the council who's sitting as legislative body. So you can, you can fully and freely participate in discussions about how to change the code, whether and how to change the code and the general plan, uh, without fear of tripping up on that issue.
So we could all address the, the consultant as private citizens, you're saying?
Well, you're, you're addressing him as commissioners, but you can address him with your comments and your, your, um, uh, recommendations. Uh, that'd be fine. And I'll look to Lucas to perhaps separately advise what the best mechanics of getting early comments from commissioners are.
Okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, along those lines, is it going to be, do you think a broad overview of the general plan or are they going to be concentrating on certain elements?
You're, you should be expecting a broad overview.
Okay. And I believe they're going to be coming back again. So after the broad overview, we'll have a chance or even in between probably to make comments or somehow send them in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and in addition, uh, I can, I can imagine the land use element, the circulation element, uh, maybe the environmental el, element of the general plan. And there may be some others that Matt will, will suggest as well. But those are all areas where they ought to be looking for inputs from the planning commission.
And circulation, Steve.
Yeah, circulation, environment and land use, I know of. Oh, and how.
Housing.
Housing element as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the whole thing, really.
Right.
The whole thing. I think you need to understand something too. It's, it's a, a brush stroke of the whole. We'll talk about this more on the 7th, but it's a brush stroke of the, of the entire general plan, but it's focusing on specific elements that, that have key components that need to be updated. Um, there are elements that are just going to get revised and up, updated in terms of current standards. And there are elements that will, that will be pieced, that will be basically torn apart and need to piece back together. I think that's probably the best way to describe that.
And Lucas, do you know if the consultants consider the Ventura County General Plan update and the unincorporated areas of the valley?
Uh, in terms of how our general plan operates?
Right.
It will be looked at, um, and there could very well be goals and policies, um, along those lines as well.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure that's part of the conversation. Awesome.
And they've been following it. They've been following that as well.
Uh, commission, are we, are we, uh, satisfied with this update on the general plan? Looking forward a week to the next planning commission meeting.
Yeah, looking forward to it, definitely.
Um, any other business properly before the commission this evening? Uh, Souza, did you, uh, have something you wanted to say as our city council liaison?
No response.
Seeing, and I thank you all for your time. And, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:42. Thank you very.